Award, and we're privileged to have two of those recipients here. I'd like them to come forward if you would. Just stand right over here and we can face the audience and then help see some cameras as well. Is it really Alyssa? Alyssa Johnson? Congratulations on receiving that award. And Hallie, like it, congratulations. Do either of you want to say something? It's just a great opportunity for speaking and that kind of experience and all that kinds of stuff.
What was the award for, girls?
Mine was for Donnie Brooks to the Veterans Association and the Portland Children's Bus Make.
You want to say yours?
I made masks.
Mike?
Mike.
Oh, excuse me. Do we have it on?
I made masks or helped, I guess, let a workshop about mask making at the, two years ago? Last year? Gay Straight Alliance Summit.
That's great. Well, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
I love your hands. Do you want to say something on behalf of the organization itself or anything? And I'll probably pass this to you. Yes.
I think we just do want to say that this is the highest award that Girl Scouting gives to its girls. It's the equivalent of the Eagle Scout Award, which is better known for Boy Scouts.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you.
The other thing is it's a combination of service and leadership. So they had to do a project that had 60 hours of more of leadership, and that didn't count their personal service hours. So they had to create a project where they led others to complete the project. So it ended up being many more than 60 hours total. But the idea is that they've learned how to lead others and serve their community.
That's great. We look forward to you being up here someday, leading.
Alyssa, I owe you a hug. I didn't see you back there. How are you? Good.
And under our presentations, we have the Regional Transportation Plan. And I presume that we are going to have John Lewis make the presentation.
We didn't have role calling?
Oh, we didn't have role. Well, it's not my fault. It's not on this.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
And Mayor Neely?
Here. Oftentimes, I don't read what I'm supposed to read, but in this case, there wasn't anything to read, so I'm looking at that. Yeah. And, oh, it's up here, but it's on the screen. Well, all right. I can't multitask either. With that, John Lewis?
Thank you very much for taking the time to get engaged in transportation planning. This topic is fairly new for me. I mean, Nancy did the majority of the lion's share of the regional transportation planning for Public Works and for the city. And so I've been pretty excited about learning some of the things that come out of that. And I wanted to share some of it because in 2013, we've had a bunch of transportation planning. And I know Betty and Doug, you're very familiar with that because of your role on the C4 and work at J-PAC. But 2014 is also going to be a busy year because a lot of the work that we've done in 2013 will be adopted. So I just quickly go over, quickly, general overview of the game, who the players are, some of the key plays, how Oregon City looks, and what the current score is. If the presentation goes too long, I might cut the Oregon Passenger Rail, but I'm going to try and squeeze all that in as quickly as I can. Honestly, the game, I believe, is trying to make our transportation system as efficient as it can be. We've got, we're scheduled over the planning horizon, the next 20 years, to see somewhere around 1.9 million people in the Portland metro region and lots of new jobs, hopefully, lots of traffic, I suspect, will come with that, more diversity, and more infrastructure to maintain. So planning, in my mind, is a good thing to do. So that's, and I see a lot of it going on. Some of the overarching themes for transportation planning, you'll see here, I think these themes are the kind of things that kind of thread our transportation planning in the region together. Obviously, we're looking for vibrant communities and economic prosperity. Equality is kind of a, maybe not a new thing, but we hear a lot about it in transportation planning now, and safety, of course, as well. You know, the lion's share of the funding comes through the federal government. So federal government allocates that money to ODOT. And, you know, these are just a couple of programs that have been, that we've seen funding come to the city over the years. We see that funding kind of drying up unless something changes at the federal level. Those federal dollars come to the state. And, you know, the state's mission is to provide safe, efficient transportation systems that support economic opportunity and livable communities in Oregon. And I think they're trying to do that through their planning. They obviously make the rules and allocate most of that funding down through the metro government and through the cities and counties. But metro, I think, definitely struggles with distinctiveness. You know, they do a lot of things at metro. They run the zoo, the cemeteries, or some of the cemeteries, obviously solid waste. But they also do the lion's share of the regional planning. They are the group that hosts and kind of forms the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation and the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, which is kind of more of the planning leg to that. But the two are very, very interrelated. Obviously, densities impact traffic. So anyway, metro is a strong player in our region. The counties, Washington, I think, Washington County is definitely kind of the new frontrunner. Interestingly, we presented this to the TAC last night, and their feeling was that, or one of the members has some history with Oregon City as a past employee. And he told me, he shared with me that it used to be Clackamas County that was the frontrunner when it came to negotiations in the region. I think during the Highway 205 era, that was probably very true. And, but over time, there's been some separation there. And I think Washington County, with a lot of its economic development and some of its drivers, has kind of become the new norm. And they've really kind of got it down. Clackamas County, Multnomah County is driven very much by Portland, and so they also are pretty strong at the table. Clackamas County, I would say, is, we're getting up to speed or back up to speed with that. We do see unincorporated Clackamas County, and Clackamas County is kind of difficult for me at this point in my education of transportation planning to figure out exactly whether or not the county is watching for the overall region or if they're focused pretty closely on the unincorporated areas.
I think right now, just to clear that up, it's unincorporated.
You think so?
I think at this moment.
Yeah. You know, then cities, transit agencies, special interest groups, and by special interest groups, I mean the biking advocates, the health, actually, some degree health advocate, environmental advocates, those kind of things. So, moving on. So the state controls the funding, but does it out in the form of metro grants. Some of the things that we've seen in metro grants or through the state have been the OTIA funding. The Jug Handle was built with the Jobs and Transportation Act funding. Connect Oregon is a newer one. Flex funds, the state essentially set aside some money for metro to allocate through the regional flex funds program. That came through the state. So really, they're the first stop for any funding that comes from the federal government. And then metro does a variety of things that I've already talked about, but let's see, what did I want to say about this one? The Regional Transportation Plan is one of the documents that I really want to talk on. Climate Smart Communities is a plan that's coming together and going to be adopted. All, these first three items are going to be adopted in 2014. The Active Transportation Plan, corridor planning, they typically sponsor that kind of thing. And obviously, they were a big player in our transportation system planning. So, what is a regional transportation plan? And, you know, this is an important document for Oregon City and all the cities in the region. It's required for all metropolitan regions. It's a long-range plan, says 20 years. Right now, they're looking at a 2040 plan, so that's more like 25 years. You know, it's also a list of projects that's, for Oregon City, it's combined with mostly the projects that we already have in our transportation system plan. We've kind of combined some of those. We've got a financially constrained list in our transportation system plan. We have, we also have a financially constrained list of projects in our RTP. And I'll show you more of that in a minute. The update is required every four years, so the last one was dated 2010. This next one will be dated 2014. If we miss that deadline, and one of the challenges for staff has been to meet this deadline, it's not like we have a large transportation planning group. So, but if we miss that, if the metro region were to miss that, then they would have trouble obligating federal transportation funds. So it's a pretty important step.
Let me just interrupt at that point. The traffic system plan that we approved here, is that part of what you're talking about?
Transportation System Plan?
That we approved.
It, there's pieces of it in the Regional Transportation Plan. So the things that are listed on the Regional Transportation Plan are also listed in the, in our local transportation system plan. So there's a list of Oregon City projects and all the other agencies in, around the region that have their own list of projects. And in theory, they all mirror their own transportation plans. Ours is fairly new, so ours does a better job of mirroring that than, say, Wes Lynn, who is just now starting their TSP update. So, so again, 2013 was fairly busy with mostly getting input from staff, trying to confirm some of the financial assumptions that are made in the Regional Transportation Plan. Because the Regional Transportation Plan does include a revenue side, right? They project revenues as well as project expenses. So over the planning horizon, they went and looked at those funding assumptions and kind of shared that information with the local governments to match. So, so again, we've submitted for the, on December 6th, the C4 made the recommendation to adopt the list as drafted. So next, 2014, they'll move through the verification that the RTP meets some of the targets that it's supposed to meet, and then adoption in July of 2014. There will be another public comment period, and one of the challenges with this RTP update is we didn't have a lot of time. So metro essentially felt like since those agencies, many of the agencies had gone through recent transportation plan updates, since this information is really just carrying that forward, that there wasn't a lot of need for public comment during this, gathering all this information and giving it to metro. Metro will end up doing the public comments after the first of the year. Climate Smart Communities, this is another plan. I call it a functional plan that helps guide some of these other documents in the future. It's not done now, so it's not guiding this RTP update or Regional Transportation Plan update, although the themes are the same. We've heard these same things like reduce gas emissions and, you know, air quality, improving air quality, jobs and housing. These are all themes that help our economy, help our environment, help our social equity. So this one here is pretty hard to follow, but it's about greenhouse gas emissions. And it basically says, our recent trends through the projects that have been happening have been improving with the projection of greenhouse gas emissions. So that first category, scenario A, represents kind of what's been, what the trends have happened so far. Category B is if we do what we say we're going to do in our adopted plans, that would essentially hit what's a state-manded target for 20% reduction by 2035 of greenhouse gas emissions for vehicles and small trucks. So they feel like we're making progress and headed in the right direction. So that's Regional Transportation Plan. The Active Transportation Plan, again, it's similar in terms of kind of the trends that they're trying to, and the targets that they're trying to reach. It's a little, there's some other twists to that, which are things like healthy people and lower health costs, so that's a goal. Supporting tourism, they see a lot of tourism potential, a lot of bicycling and some sports that go along with shared use paths, those kind of things. Provide choices for people that might want to use an alternative mode of transportation other than driving. So that's the Active Transportation Plan. There's been some concern that that active transportation would help change how funding is awarded, and that's not the intent of that Active Transportation Plan. It's not changing the projects that we necessarily have to, you know, that doesn't change our project list necessarily. It may influence that in the future, but at this point in time, it's not. Okay, so transit is a big topic for Oregon City. I just included this slide. The Active Transportation Plan, obviously, because it's not about all driving modes, it's more about transit or biking or walking, those kind of things. So transit's a piece of the ATP. And the piece that I thought was important here is the, the region has divided our region into five distinct categories. And Mayor Neely, I think you're pretty familiar with these because I've heard you talk about it. You know, they've completed the work with the Southwest Corridor, and they had, metro had committed to looking at the Southeast Corridor and East Side Corridor is next. And they are planning to do that. And so, a couple reminders, on January 7th, the City Commission Work Session, TRIMET's going to be here for that, to talk to you about their service and some of the programs that they have. Couple of programs that I recently learned about, we just went to a kickoff meeting last week about the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail Bus Service Plan. It's called PMLT. And that plan is to look at busing in the region or in the, in the Southwest, Southeast Corridor and some to the East Corridor as to how buses would, bus service will change because of the MAX line coming into Milwaukee. So that's the other one. And then they're also doing a Southeast Service Enhancement Plan, which really looks at the whole Southeast area. And tries, it's basically a community outreach program to figure out what people like you are wanting to see in terms of service levels and service needs.
And when did you say they were coming?
They'll be here January 7th for your work session. And it's the, oh, I forgot, the chair, not the chair, the big cheese at TRIMET.
Neil?
Neil.
Neil McFarland.
Neil McFarland, yeah, he'll be here. Again, the ATP, they've been doing preliminary work, they're moving through that. We expect to see some adoption in 2014. So there'll be more to come on that. So Oregon City and the regional transportation planning, how's Oregon City doing? You know, we've done a lot. There's a lot of accomplishments to be proud of, whether it be the Transportation System Plan update or the, you know, the Main Street, a lot of the projects that we've done, Main Street, McGloughlin Boulevard, all those have been good things to have accomplished to date. I think both of your roles on the C4 have been influential, and I think we need to continue focusing on that. I see transportation planning becoming quite a bit more political, so having a presence at those meetings is pretty important. And having someone knowledgeable about, you know, the details, the fun detail of transportation planning. But I think we're doing well on that. We've completed Trails Master Plan, we're working on this RTP update. I think things are moving forward well for Oregon City. Just a quick, terrible slide to show, but I'm going to show you a couple of these. This is for the RTP. The second column over, that's $1,370 million and change that will be, that's anticipated for revenue for the Clackamas County area over the 2040 planning period. So that's the number, that's the target that we were trying to hit with the Regional Transportation Plan list. And you can kind of see how that's broken out by the other jurisdictions and also over the four periods of planning that they've kind of tried to allocate that over. And then this very detailed slide is also just showing Oregon City's numbers. So we're essentially showing a fiscally constrained total of $187,900,000 for projects that we would, we're proposing could be funded over the planning horizon as well. There's also $43 million that's unfunded, and we're not sure how. We'll cover those. So the current score, I think our outlooks on grants are good. We do a good job with grants. I think they're getting harder and harder to complete. I think the last grant we saw through Connect Oregon had some pretty interesting criteria. It was like a 36-page application, and the guidance document was another 50 pages. So they're definitely adding to the effort there. And given the, you know, the demand for videos and justification and selling your project, it's going to be a challenge. So again, we'll need your support on those projects as well. Local development, I've got kind of a, the faces mean something. I added those today just to let you know. I think we're doing okay with regard to local development and SDCs and developer investment. I think, you know, it could get better, and we're working on programs to kind of help improve that and make our development community a little more interested in Oregon City. Urban renewal, and in the past, we've used urban renewal for transportation projects. I'm not sure that that's going to continue, that's a trend that's going to continue. So it's hard to put these projects together and to get, have seed money. And so not having urban renewal for that is going to add some challenges. Public transit specific to Oregon City, I guess this is TRIMET. It's, I think, over the long term, it's going to be a challenge because they're going to have to double their service to really kind of meet the needs of the region. And how they fund that is going to be questionable. But I also think there's some interesting discussions going on right now with regard to how other forms of transportation might help. Betty handed me a flyer from Lake Oswego. They're now, the Merrill Hurst Community, it's not the community, not the college, but the care facility and just the adult home that they have there, they're running bus service between Oregon City and Lake Oswego.
Mary's Woods.
Mary's Woods. And you, you know, you can actually wave those buses down, and they'll let you on the bus if you need a ride. So that's happening twice a day now.
It's nice.
Which, they got a grant to do that, and we just learned about it the other day at the C4 meeting. So the regional center in Oregon City, you know, alls I would say about that is, I think, you know, the region, the state, they allocated money for our Jug Handle project. And with the idea that that project would include a development in our regional town center, and that hasn't come to fruition, and I think people are watching that. People are, those that make those decisions about funding are paying attention to the fact that that was something that they felt like wasn't necessarily a guarantee, was a pretty strong promise, and it hasn't happened. So I think that's something we need to watch out for.
Specifically to landfill site.
Specifically to the landfill site. Again, mentioned the Clackamas Coordinating Committee, approve bonded indebtedness. Again, it's just a challenge to put these packages together, and if there was a way to get funding in another, you know, any option we have for funding mechanisms is pretty helpful. And sometimes getting voter approval on, you know, a road project is not that easy to do. And then community sport, it's kind of hard to know sometimes really kind of where the community is with that. And I would say, again, Washington County, what I've seen from them is they've got a lot of special interest groups that are really rallying around transportation and transportation funding. So it'd be good to see that in Clackamas County as well. So that's my transportation planning update, and I'm going to just jump real quick through these next slides on the Oregon Passenger Rail.
Before you do that, I just want to make one comment. I think, I truly think transportation funding is going to become more political and more adversary, adversarial with our other county, city people, because there's just not a lot of it out there anymore.
Well, if you think positive thoughts, maybe it'll go the other way.
It will. But I was thinking about this. You know, we're encouraging everybody to do bikes and walk and take mass transit, and then that cuts down on the money we get for our gas tax and all that. So we want people to do the right thing, but they still need to pay us money.
One thing that, if you could pursue it before Mr. McFarland comes before us in the study session. Two or three years ago, I had understood that after the Southwest Corridor Plan, the Southeast Corridor Plan was the one that they were going to focus on. Now I hear it might be the East Corridor Plan. And were priorities changed, or did I simply misunderstand something about two years ago?
I think they're going to do them at the same time.
Or they're going to do it simultaneously?
Yeah. And I expect him to talk to that specifically today. Like I said, we had that kickoff meeting and they're...
I was just hoping our position didn't get displaced in some kind of process. So, okay.
Can I ask a question about this, too? The federal funding you're talking about that's being dispersed to the state and then down to us, is that coming out of the Federal Highway Trust Fund? So in conjunction with this letter that we got from Earl Blumenauer about the...
I believe so. I mean, that's, I didn't go that far up into the tree. I, and so those, I listed two programs there. I'd want to go back and look at their website to be for sure where the seed money for that came from.
Okay.
But I believe that's where it comes from.
Okay. Because metro did put off, I really appreciate you doing this because this is everything I had to report about metro tonight.
Yeah.
So, but metro did put off signing that letter to...
Yeah. The Blumenauer letter.
Right.
Right. And I don't know if we were, that was at one point, we were going to talk about that. I don't know if we've...
We handed it out last time.
Okay.
We didn't get to talk about it under my report.
Okay. So this is just a slightly different project. It is regional transportation planning. It's Eugene to Portland and beyond, really. It's Vancouver and essentially Canada at some point. So this is high-speed rail between Eugene and Portland, this particular project. So this, I think most of you are pretty informed about this. It's, they're looking at various alternatives to get from Eugene to Vancouver, and they've diced that up into three segments, and I'm going to talk about Segment C because it's the one most related to our, well, it's the only one that's related to Oregon City. So Section C, there's really two main alternatives. Each of those has a little spin on it as you move into Portland. But as they come through Oregon City, there's really only the two alternatives. There's the red alternative and the blue alternative. And the red alternative would follow the I-5, 205 corridor, and then make a hard left into, well, depending if you're headed into Portland, make a hard left along I-84 and head into Portland. The blue line follows the Union Pacific Track and would essentially share that track with Union Pacific and the freight lines that run on that. And this is, again, a pretty long-range project. They're trying to limit the number of alternatives so that they can reduce the amount of work that goes into any kind of an environmental assessment of these alignments. So they're about through that process and trying to make some hard decisions about which alignment should fall off the list. But for Oregon City, there's still these two alignments, and they'll both be, remain on the list. The one piece of new information that I learned about this one that I hadn't learned in the open house was that the red line may not result in a stop in Oregon City. The blue line definitely does because it runs right along our Amtrak and would stop at that station. The red line essentially crosses through Oregon City and somehow, you know, stays on 205, but obviously, there's a barrier there.
It doesn't stop.
It may not stop there. And the other thing is they're, you know, they're working hard to keep three stops in the metro region. So if the red line were to happen, there's debate about whether or not Oregon City would be a stop. So, you know, that, that may or may not mean that, you know, we should be more in favor of the blue line if we're thinking of a stop, especially with the Willamette Falls Legacy Project coming online. It seems like that would make sense.
There's also, there's also the question of the major investment we made in the station.
Yes.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. That's going to take, I think, some political...
Political will.
Yes.
The, again, this is just scoring. Essentially, what they're saying is, and I think it's really costs, but there were some real big questions about some of this evaluation. They've got, they've got some assessment goals that they've been kind of measuring these projects by. The big change for the red alignment is cost. I think they think it's more costly to run down... I think they think it's more costly to run down 205 than it would be to make improvements along the Union Pacific line. So, that may, that may lend itself.
That's a good thing.
There was a fair amount of discussion about their cost estimates though and there's a lot of people who felt like they weren't quite right. But I, I just think that based on this scoring, it does look more favorable for the blue line. Union Pacific was, was, is, I mean, pressing pretty hard on the fact that they don't think they can, you know, move the freight that they need to move and move high-speed rail. And I, I guess the other thing I would say about high-speed rail through Oregon City, it's not exactly high-speed rail. It's probably not going to be any faster than Amtrak through Oregon City and through, you know, the metro region. It'll be high-speed between Eugene and probably Wilsonville, but not, not through the metro region.
Right. Something that just came to my mind when you're talking about this, there's some train I've been reading about that's coming between Portland and Seattle and it's called the Portland Fun Train or something like that.
I think that's Amtrak, right?
Yeah, and it's, but it's being sponsored by the rail in Seattle. It's something to do with the city of Seattle. And I'm wondering if they're aware of, you know, what we're doing here in Oregon City with the legacy project and if that could put any pressure on making a decision one way or the other, if there was a destination, you know, to include in that train system.
I don't know, but I can ask.
Okay. And I can find the name of that train.
Yeah, if you would do that, that would be helpful. Okay. Try and finish up real quickly. So, mostly the public outreach is, is done and for 2013, they're going to, they're going to make, I understand, really, the community that the mayor from Eugene is leading up, which is the elected, elected body, they're actually going to be, their intent was to in 2013 make a decision on what alignments to pursue for environmental impact statements and then work 2014 for environmental impact statements. So, doesn't sound like we're going to have a lot of community outreach during 2014 on this one, but we'll keep an eye on it and give you any updates if they're significant. That's it.
Thank you, John.
You did a lot better job than I would have.
Thank you.
The, I guess coming, coming to our rapid rail, semi-rapid rail, whatever it is that comes through, I think it's important for us to know mechanisms that we can go about in terms of the lobbying effort and whether or not, when there are discussions with Union Pacific, whether there are deals that can be made. And what I'm talking about specifically was there had been discussions at one point of basically tax credits for Union Pacific, for, tax credits for rail capital improvements that the private rail systems could make. It was looked at congressionally on a federal basis, but I believe it was also looked on on a state basis. We, and those capital credits don't exist, but if a deal could be worked out where, if in fact, Union Pacific did upgrades it would normally do, that could give capital credits, it may well be that Union Pacific and, and our public rail system could both benefit from what might happen in this segment. So, I think those are kinds of things that we, Union Pacific will be reluctant. I mean, it's their, it's their right of way. You've only got one rail coming through Oregon City, which is an area of concern on their part. And we've got to yield to Union Pacific trains on their right of way. If there are things that can be done jointly that, in terms of capital investment, that would benefit both Union Pacific and our public rail system, then, then, then we might have been more cloud in the process.
No, I think that's right. And I think they're working in that direction, but your question about how do we continue to have influence, I'll, I'll look into that and see during the year 2014, we'll want to make sure we're at the table if there is a table. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much. Very informative.
And with that, now, do we have public comment? And I have to switch my line over? I'm sure we do. We always have. Whenever William Gifford is here, we have public comment. I'm sure he has. He's not, he's not there.
He's not even on the list.
But Bob Mahoney and William Becker can come forward.
Yes.
Okay. Turn around.
No, in the order in their call, it is Bob Mahoney.
Oh, is that right? Okay. Good. That's not what they call me in public. All right. Behind my back. I really hadn't planned on being here tonight until I had an occasion to turn on the TV and to the public channel and see the CIC meeting most recently where a topic was brought up regarding the city charter. And what I want to talk to you about tonight, my reaction, of course, this one person speaking on my behalf, is two words, transparency and coordination. The word was, as the individual put his thoughts together regarding this, as he laid this matter before the CIC, was he frankly didn't trust the city staff. Okay? Well, I'm a process guy. I've been in government for 20 years. I trust the city staff. I really do. As exemplified here by John just giving you a very complicated technical report that you guys are supposed to digest in five minutes. These are professional people. They've got the, they don't have the authority, but they've got the technical know-how. And the number one goal in the state of Oregon in Senate Bill 100 for land use law in this state of Oregon is citizen involvement. We go out of our way for citizen involvement. Now, in terms of reviewing the city charter, and in my opinion, the only board in the city that is authorized to initiate a review of the city charter is the city commission. Or if it's done by initiative, and I'm no attorney, so I may be speaking way off pace here, but if the city charter, as it was proposed at the CIC the other night, is to be reviewed, it should be initiated by this community or by this commission. No ifs, ands, or buts. And in terms of, that would give the transparency issue credibility. If the CIC or anybody else wants to sit down at a coffee clutch or a book of the month club and review the city charter for their information, have at it. But in terms of looking at the city charter with the quasi idea of we have the authority to do this and we're going to make some changes, that's a political issue that I think has legal implications and our city attorney would be more than capable of interpreting. But you people have the authority to interpret and enforce and administer the city charter. And as a voter, that's what I expect you to do. I don't expect the CIC to do it. In terms of trusting the city staff, these people go out of their way to make information available to you. And they, they're subject to burnout with information. I mean, there's only 24 hours in the day, you know, and they don't turn the key at 5:00 and go home without taking their stuff home with them. Witness the tragedy that happened the other day, you know, and we don't have to go over that. But that's just one of the implications of being, of government, city employee at any level, you see. But, you know, I, the person indicated that they were passionate about this. So am I.
I want to mention something. The, the review of the city charter was one of our goals. We tabled that discussion because we wanted to get the water rates sorted out because that was put in by an initiative citizens earlier on. And we made the decision, and probably was a correct one at the time, to split the water rate into two different ballots, one being removing, preventing the rollback that would have occurred. The other one was, the other one that we wanted to deal with is having the cap at 3%. We decided to do it in two separate pieces because we filed, one might clobber the success of the other. The first one, which, which passed incidentally, was the rollback didn't go through. The percentage victory was very small. And I, I wouldn't have been surprised if we tried to get those into the same ballot measure. In fact, it probably would have failed.
I think so.
But, and it was a unanimous decision on the part of this commission to table that revision. And the person you're talking about was on the commission when that unanimous decision was made, so.
Well, I don't want to mention any...
Yeah, no, I, but the point is, I think you're right and, and it is one of our goals and we're going to be doing, not setting a new goal set, whereas two-year goals, but we're going to be looking at the goals we set and where we are in that process in January.
Well, I find that local government is a moving target. We all know that. Things are changing so fast in this digital age, it, it, you can't keep up. You just can't. And our staff here is doing a tremendous job in keeping up, or at least trying.
Well, thank you for the compliment to the staff.
Well, you know, I, like I say, I, I had no prepared statement. I, I just, you know me, I just...
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody. I want to bring up one of Oregon City's dirty little secrets yet. Oh, William Becker, Oregon City. And that's about the homeless population. And I've been doing tours in this town for a long time. We have a lot of homeless people. I was giving one Friday and I saw a guy sleeping in a doorway in a sleeping bag. He was bundled up. I didn't want to wake him up to see if he was all right and alive. But the last time I brought up the, the issue was with the last mayor and the last city, or city manager, and it was before a storm. And the response was, when I asked, what are we doing for shelters for the homeless? The mayor looked blank and said, well, elderly who lose their power and their heat can go to the Pioneer Center. And I'm hoping we have more compassion for the homeless on this commission. I don't want people arrested. I'd be one of the first people out protesting that behavior. I want services in this town for people who need the services. I'm not aware of any food banks in town. We don't have any soup kitchens in town. We have a lot of people with a lot of needs. I've heard there are a lot of students in this city that are homeless. I think Commissioner Smith could probably answer to that better than I could. But we have a big need that nobody's willing to talk about and it's time it became a big part of the discussion and I think part of the goal-setting. Usually, those have to be public-private partnerships. But Clackamas County and the city have really laid, you know, let down on this. And in my mind, part of the civility and degree of civilization of a community is how it treats its people, all of the people, and especially those really in need.
Father's Heart is the only service that I know of that distributes food and clothing.
No, we have a lot of churches.
We have a food bank. Every, every day of the week, there's a church that's open with a food bank.
Yeah, that's right.
My husband back there in the back is the head of the one for St. John's.
Okay, but is there a place where people can get a hot meal that have no place to cook food from the food bank?
Yes, Father's Heart.
Okay.
Yes.
One of the problems, though, that I've heard from that is people have been bussed in from Portland and left here with no return ticket and we still have no place for people to sleep later. And after 3:30, we, they might be able to get lunch there, but where are they going to get dinner? And our Father's Heart is quite new, so.
Yeah.
Well, it's new to here, but it existed in Clackamas before it moved here.
Okay, but it's still a big issue here.
It is.
And we need to do more, and the word needs to get out about these things. I've spent most of my life in Portland and everybody knows where the soup kitchens are, where the food kitchens are, where you can go donate your time, where the shelters are, where everything is. People know how to get people to places. People know how to donate. People know how to give vouchers for meals. There's all this kind of stuff. And anything that we do here, I've here along these lines are pretty well-kept secrets, so.
It's not only homeless from other areas being bussed in. Our chief was telling me that a city police officer brought one homeless person here into Oregon City from another city and dropped him off here.
I've, I've heard that. And there's no way for them to go and there's, again, the, the question isn't do we arrest people or move them on? The question is how do we provide services?
Yes, I agree with you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comment.
You're welcome.
Bob LaSalle, Jonathan Stone, please come forward. Starting with Bob LaSalle.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Bob LaSalle and I live in Oregon City. At the last CIC meeting, I mentioned that Commissioners Roth and Mum had been tasked two years ago to study the city charter for possible changes. I also mentioned that somewhere around the first of the year, it was decided that this should be put forward until after the May elections. I then stated that still, nothing had been done. I based that information from reading the minutes of the city commission meetings. I owe you both an apology. I've since found out that some action in that regard has been taken behind the scenes. And I in no way meant those statements to suggest that you aren't doing your jobs for the citizens, but simply that it may have got lost in the shuffle. It might have helped if you had made a statement during one of the meetings that the subject is still being discussed. And that certainly would have helped me to not make a dope of myself. But since I made my statements in public, I feel I owe you my apology in public.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
And that old crow doesn't taste very good.
I think we've all had that old crow in our mouth at one time or another.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Jonathan, what do you want to apologize for?
We'll take that and apologize.
You still want to honeymoon, Jonathan? You're fine.
I just came, I wanted to make an announcement about the elevator lighting, the much anticipated elevator lighting will be on Wednesday, January 22nd at 6:30 PM. We will be closing, the plan is to close Seventh Street and we're looking at some combination of artist reception plus. The plus is still being figured out, but nevertheless, we have to justify all that extra space we will be having, so we hope it will be a good time and I hope that all of you can make it.
So, it's January 22nd?
That is a Wednesday, right? I'm speaking from memory.
I think, I think that'll be the singularly biggest event that we've had since the bridge opening. I guess it's going to have far greater regional coverage.
I think so.
Correct. The Oregonian is listening. Oh.
He's gone.
They'll, they'll be getting a press release.
You said 6:00?
6:30.
6:30.
That's great.
Thank you. That's awesome. We've been waiting for that.
Is it the plan, Jonathan, that people should come down, have dinner, or meet?
Correct. Correct. Yes.
I think that might be a good plan.
We, I'm...
You can start out.
Details aren't ironed yet, but the plan is, is that we want to invite especially everyone that works downtown or works in the city to stay downtown and stay in the city, especially if they're not from Oregon City, to enjoy the dining options, happy hour options downtown and then after work and then to sort of move over to the, the Seventh Street in the elevator to enjoy in the ceremony and then potentially stay downtown for dinner or what have you afterwards. So, we're working with a number of the restaurants to put together, you know, elevator illuminate sort of specials, you know, so. But I don't know exactly what those will be yet, but they will be listed and posted and emailed and Facebooked and all that sort of stuff, so.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Barely certain we're all going to be present.
Very good. And I think the only, we don't even have, we don't have any general business before us. We've, we've, we can adopt the agenda, but I guess the agenda primarily consists of the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything to pull?
No.
Hearing nothing? A motion on the consent agenda, please?
Move to adopt.
Betty Mum, move. Kathy Rock seconded. And we all vote?
Our voting machine is working, people.
Very good. And you have us vote on, on that particular topic. And with that, we'll be going on to communications, starting with our city manager. Thank you, Your Honor. During this last meeting of this year.
Will you be adopting the consent agenda?
Oh, we won't? We just won't?
Okay. I thought it was adopting the agenda. I apologize. I didn't...
We were moving quick, Bill.
You good? What was the motion?
Yeah, it was Betty and Carol.
I apologize.
It's a good thing you were keeping us on track.
I don't think you mess up very often, though.
I try not to.
Mr. Mayor, first, I want to, at Rotary, when you brag about things or boast, you get fined. And I don't have any more cash because I had a Rotary meeting today, but I do want to boast a little bit about.
Were you showing baby pictures at the Rotary meeting?
No.
That'd be a bigger fine, huh?
But I do have a boast for our finance department, and it couldn't be more timely. About six or seven weeks ago, the finance department went through a review, and we didn't talk a lot about this. It's just sort of one of these things that they do. And it was also one of the targets that Wyatt Parno, when I hired him to be our new finance director, these were one of the preliminary goals that we had discussed in trying to add capacity and professionalism to our finance department and the services that they provide us. And we've done everything we can to try to position the city to be as cost-effective as possible moving forward on big projects that we know we're going to be facing, and we know what a number of those are. So they went through a review. I've been through these before in other cities, and they're pretty intensive, but our finance staff went through a review with standard and pores at that time, and I am happy to report today that the city's credit rating has been upgraded from AA minus to AA.
Woo! Yay!
Wyatt did an amazing job and his team that he has assembled, and I know you've seen a few new faces, and those are part of that new team. And we have more CPAs, more talented people than we've ever had working in our finance department. And the timing, of course, knowing that we have to spend money on library facilities and other needs that the community has, what that, every tick on that rate sheet means savings for our taxpayers when it comes to financing these projects and the interest rates that we pay. So that's, that's just a wonderful accomplishment.
What is the highest rating we can get?
AAA.
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 Yeah.
So we're only one unit now below the federal government. They went from a AAA down to a AAA minus, didn't we? Didn't they?
Depends on the rating.
Political answer.
I have to comply, I have to follow up on that, though, Mayor, because per capita, we have far less debt than the United States government.
Yes. Yes.
Per capita, we do. So I have your goals update, and we are going to, you know, you have two-year goals, and you have a two-year budget now, but we are going to have an update for you in January. We're still looking at the 25th. It's going to be just a short report on what our accomplishments are, but I have this report, the written version, and I want you to look carefully at and think about the fact that when you set two-year goals and a two-year budget, we should only be about halfway through this because we have another year, and actually, it's, we've only been working on this about seven months, seven or eight months. So it's, it's not that we've had the full year even by the time you look at it.
20th what day?
January 25th. It's January 25th, right?
Yes.
Yeah. That's our target date. Save the date or whatever.
Isn't that the chamber dinner?
It is, but we'll be done, we'll, it's not a full.
And it's funny that you mentioned that because, I don't know if you, you remember the very first year that I was here, we had a retreat, and we all brought our clothes and changed clothes in the city hall. So it happens that way sometimes. So I'm going to hand out this goals report, and just be thinking about this because it doesn't mean that we have a bunch of new capacity to do new things in the next coming year. You'll see things on here that you know are really important to all of you.
Really, I had a really long list to add to it.
We had 35, you had 35 objectives. And I'm, I'm happy to report that as of today, and tonight was one of them, the DDA being a member.
Yes.
Yep. So out of your 35 objectives over the two-year period, 13 are finished. I mean, done. They're not, nothing has to be done. 20 of them are on target, and only two of the 35 have had to be revised. So I'm really, I want to thank the staff. Amazing job that you guys have done this past 12 months, just amazing. So I will hand this out and keep that for food for thought because after the first of the year, we'll probably be giving you some sort of an agenda for the report that we're going to do, the midterm report. But there will be also time for you to highlight some issues for discussion, much like we would do in a work session. You can't make decisions there, but, you know, it's just a discussion, and we want to make sure if there's any hot topics or things out there. One of them for sure would be, I'd like to get facilities master planning, keep talking about that. And also, we have our water, water rate issue to resolve, which we've got resolved, half of it resolved. We still have the other half to resolve. I think we did resolve the hardest, the most difficult half, I think, has been resolved. I guess.
The most important.
The most important one. The crisis mode has been averted. So also, let me see here, kind of a small thing, but you don't know this, and I don't want to embarrass any of our employees, but without any, any encouragement from anyone in management, the city's Public Works Department just decided to adopt a family for the holidays, and they've been doing internal fundraising for that family and getting gifts and supplies and different things, even some cash donations together. And I just want to thank you, John.
Yeah, that's awesome.
We've got a bunch of tough guys out there with shovels and coveralls, and yet, you know, they have a heart for these things, and I just think that's a really nice gesture.
We'll be at the high school tomorrow. I need that, which PD and my.
Nice. And you'll be taking pictures?
Yeah, I probably should. I will. I'll do that.
And then last but not least, I wanted to give Nancy I just a, just a chance to update you on our implementation of your right-of-way ordinance because we sent out a bunch of letters to all of our right-of-way users, and we're on track to continue that. And enforcement will, you know, compliance has to be sometime in February, and then we'll be following on that. We are giving people until July 1 to actually make payments to the city because we knew that some, some of our users might have budget, budget challenges, and we didn't want them to, we wanted to give them sort of a grace period, so we.
Well, absolutely.
We made that until July 1. So Nancy, do you have any updates?
I think you just stole my thunder. The only thing I'd really like to add is that we do have a website page. It's on the homepage. There's a separate page that all of the franchisees, anyone can go to to find the forms and instructions and how, how to proceed. Again, like David said, we're delaying the implementation or the requirement, although it is retroactive, so as far as the fees are concerned. But it's out there. If you get questions or calls from anyone in the community, you can just simply direct them to us or to the homepage of the website.
Thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll simply state for a report that I'm going to wish everybody a merry holiday period and looking forward to the new year. Now, I wasn't able to make the impact meeting, but that was done in my stead by our Commission President. Show a report on that in a bit. So I'll start at my extreme lap to find out. Commissioner Polly?
Yes, well, it's been very busy and active downtown. There was the Christmas tree lighting, and I thought the turnout was great despite the frigid weather. Freezing cold. Santa was there, and lots of kids and choir, and it was great to see that turnout. So I think the word got out. The elevator lighting, as Jonathan mentioned, we're all getting geared up for that and very excited for that. So things downtown are going along nicely.
Very good.
That's all I have.
I understood Dr. McLaughlin showed up for that.
Yes.
I understood that, too. I was going to introduce you.
You had your warm coat on. You were probably the warmest.
You have a big old speech.
I was having a dialogue with Santa.
Yes, you were.
I was having a dialogue with Santa.
I have one other quick thing, so.
Or, excuse me, Dr. John McLaughlin was having a dialogue with Santa.
Main Street also had its annual board meeting, and it went great. It was held at the verdict in the holding cell in a public place, and there were quite a few attendees. So it was nice to see the participation from the public there.
Very good. Commissioner Mum?
I just have a couple of comments. As far as the Christmas tree lighting, I understood that this year, we had a new Santa, so I wanted to thank Andy and Nancy Bush. They have been Santa and Mrs. Claus for several years for that event, and so I think this is the first time they were not. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we.
First time since I've been here.
Yeah, yeah. So thank them very much for their service. And everybody should go to the library and see the library tree. It's beautiful. All the books there. Talked with the Parks Department employees. They were across the street from my house, doing some work in the park. Chatted with them. They had nothing but great comments to say about Denise. They're very, very happy that she is kind of doing that part right now. And so thank Denise for taking on another task. And I guess Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody.
Commissioner Earl?
Well, like Doug says, or Mayor Neely says, I was at the Metro Impact Meeting, and it was Loretta Smith's last meeting, so she turned the chair over to Jody Carson from West Lynn. So she'll be the new chair. They talked about the impact tours and maybe the possibility of not doing them because the attendance isn't very good, and so it's not worth putting that expense out. And the other thing they talked about, our metro conservation grants are now available. So that's something we may want to look into. And then John just did an excellent job with the rest of what I had to present, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Snow?
Just want to report on Clackamas Heritage Partners Board meeting that we had yesterday. They're, Gail will be putting together a quarterly report to the city through Scott soon, and, but what happened in terms of the last year with CHP being reopened or reopening the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center was quite successful. They spent a lot of time this year with a lot of grants to revamp a lot of the equipment within the center. I've already reported on a lot of that, and repainting the hoops, really making an effort to put some funds back into the building with funds matched from, from the city. And I, I think we are excited to see that that's going to, you know, continue, and we feel fairly good about that because they're making money. And so basically, even when the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center was closed, CHP was running the visitor's center. So some of the differences, there's a huge difference. Everything is up. Visitor count is up, money is up, but there's a great jump between the amount of money they were making and what they are making right now. The visitors total is up, but remember, the visitors still were coming when, when the building was closed. They just weren't spending very much money. They were still buying stuff at the store, but, but not paying admission. So this will all go out, I'm sure to the commissioner, at least given to the city, and I can send it out as well. But just in general, the visitors went up from about 14, a little over 14,000 to about almost 18,000. So that helped. That was a, that was a jump of about 21%.
In what time period?
The whole, for the year.
For the year.
Yeah. Revenues, now this is the, this is the big plus. In terms of admissions and retail sales, so with sales in the store and admissions through the building, when the interpretive center was closed, through the visitor's center was about, about almost $7,000 that they made through that year. With the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center open and being able to get visitors through, and remember, they weren't doing that that whole year, it was a very small part of the year, was about almost, well, about 36,000, over $36,000. So they're bringing in money, and that is a good thing because I, I very much feel that there's a commitment there that some of that money is going to come back into the building. And, you know, the city also has budgeted money for that building. I think that, you know, the city can't tackle the issues with the siding and the buildings that are needing a lot of work, but I think the money that the city has budgeted paired with money that CHP is willing to contribute can leverage a lot of money through some of the partners that are getting really a lot more involved in the center than, than ever before. One of the things I'd also like to say is there's two new board members to the CHP Board. One is John George, who is from the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron, so we are very excited about that. One, because the interpretive center is focusing, oh, much more on the story of the natives, Native Americans and a huge piece of the history that I think the city hasn't told for a long time. And I think that partnership is growing so much stronger with not only the city, but CHP and everyone really excited about what's happening at the End of the, or, excuse me, at the Falls site. And so that was a topic we talked about at the board meeting yesterday. Their other board member is Troy Bollinger from the Oregon City School Board, so he's our other new member. So we feel really good about people that are joining the board, and I'm sure Scott will probably send out something with the staff stuff, or with the, I just said staff stuff, that's our thing at school, our Friday updates, with, you know, the financials that CHP has. But good news, I think, for what they're doing over there, and.
Absolutely.
They just also submitted a grant just within the last week, also to the Confederated Tribes for $5,000 to help complete some of the projects that they've just not quite finished yet there. So I think they're definitely committed to doing a lot more grants. Dan Fowler at the meeting last night seemed very open, or very optimistic that he feels we can try to tackle the siding within the next year, so I think it's going to be a big job to do that, but they seem ready to put in the work to do that, and so that's exciting.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing nothing?
Excuse me, Mayor, did you want to make announcements of the boards of committees?
Oh, yes, I do. Thank you. Thank you for stopping. The announcements I have to make are.
Another copy coming. Recorder.
Here we go.
Do I have it here? Thank you. Yes, we've got, I wanted to make announcements. We have, we went through our selection process and interviews for people to fill both current vacancies that were current last year, or, this is still last year, excuse me, this year, but also to make appointments for the new year. We've made those appointments, however, there weren't sufficient number of applicants for many of those to fill all the seats. So I wanted to take a moment here to read off the vacancies that still exist, and we'll begin recruiting for these at the beginning of January. Budget Committee, there's one vacancy. Natural Resource Committee, there are two vacancies. Historic Review Board, one vacancy that will be filled by an Oregon City Chamber of Commerce person. Library Board, one vacancy for non-city resident. Metro Enhancement Committee, one vacancy. Oregon Civic Improvement Trust, one vacancy. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, two vacancies. Urban Renewal Budget Committee, two vacancies. And I will be going to the CIC's first meeting of the year to announce these vacancies to the CIC as well. With that, any good, anything for the good of the order?
Yes, my son's home. He just got off the plane. No, he's not.
Yeah, he's gone now. He had enough. He's already gone.
He's back on the plane right now.
Sure, visit him tomorrow.
Bye, Mom.
And we'll adjourn the meeting, and as I say, I'm looking forward for a new year, and I will.